Yeah, feel free to take some of those chairs out of the stacks so you can sit down. Can I start? I'd like to welcome everyone to our February the eighth Floyd County Commission meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. Commissioner Maxi is going to start our meeting with a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
I would be thankful for this day and for the many blessings that will happen. For the rest of our Florida county citizens, for taking the rest of their county employees, for making the decision to be according to what is best for our county. But we thank you, we love you, and. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the ever-true justice of our.
Are there any additions from the commission? Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, those stand approved as submitted. We have one person signed up for public participation tonight. We'd ask you to come to the microphone and give us your name and address. And you have three minutes to speak. And it's David Smith tonight.
Good evening. Yes, it's good to see everyone's beautiful faces and handsome faces. And my point is going to be a little bit moot, I guess, but I'm going to just lay it out anyway since I prepared it. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to the courthouse to take care of some business I had, and I was surprised to find when I went there that I couldn't go in the courthouse without a mask. I realize that's not necessarily on you guys, that the judge over there directs that. But anyway, I was given a mask by the deputies there and went on did what I needed to. But when I was in there, I noticed almost no one there was wearing their mask properly. Most people in the courthouse had it pulled down under their nose, under the chin, constantly touching it, readjusting it. So seeing all this, I could help be reminded again how nonsensical, unscientific, and most of all unconstitutional these mask requirements are. We all remember two weeks to slow the spread. It's now going on two years. And in some parts of the world, and even some parts in our own country, governments are still using the excuse of COVID to trample people's basic human rights and are becoming more and more tyrannical. I'm sure we've all seen what's going on in Canada right now. History shows us that once people give up their personal rights and liberties, it becomes harder and harder to get those rights and freedoms back. There's much more information available now than when this all first started, and there are countless doctors and scientists calling much of the response over the last two years into serious question. So this same logic should be applied when considering whether or not to have a requirement to put masks on before entering a courthouse or any other government building. It's based on CDC recommendations that continually change, have no credible evidence or pre-reviewed studies that prove their effectiveness, while there are countless studies and research papers showing now that masking the population en masse has no benefit and in many cases is worse for your overall health and has absolutely no impact on slowing or reducing the spread of the virus. The CDC is under the executive branch, so we do well to remember that they are not free from political influence or bias. So are their recommendations influenced more by science or politics? A few healthcare bureaucrats have no place making healthcare decisions for every individual in the nation. That's not how science or medicine work. We're blessed in this nation that our founders had experienced what it was like to live under a tyrannical government, and therefore they wrote our constitution to value individual freedom over collective uniformity. Several months ago at the meeting on September fourteenth, the proclamation was made concerning Constitution Week, you know, some statements made about how much we value our constitution. We surely do. But I strongly feel the support for that proclamation could be shown by this commission taking action to remove the requirement and even recommendations to wear masks in government buildings, get people back to freedom to make decisions about their personal health and safety, free from the political influence from the CDC. And just to finish, I have a quote from Mark Twain that I think applies to this situation. Mark Twain said, "In the beginning of a change, the patriot is a scarce man, and brave, and hated, and scorned. When his cause succeeds, the timid join him, for then it costs nothing to be a patriot." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is to approve the minutes from our January the twenty-eighth meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved as submitted. We have several special recognitions tonight, some really special people in our, not only in our workforce, but in our community, and so I'm going to ask Jamie McCord if he would lead us through that.
Yes, first item, and you may be aware of this, it was publicized last week, but Chief Troy Brock was awarded the Georgia State Firefighters Association Chief of the Year for 2021, and that's a big accomplishment. Troy's been employed since nineteen ninety with Rome Floyd Fire Department, became chief in 2015, and has just done a lot to encourage and promote health and wellness with department members, cancer prevention, relieving stress and sleep deprivation, muting of the radio, something that happened late last year. He also has been, you know, he doesn't, he doesn't really have a city limit or a county line, it's the Rome Floyd Fire Department to them, and we really appreciate the efforts they put out there and under his leadership. You know, they got a pay increase last year for their efforts when we were dealing with some really difficult times. Also added nine new positions to this year's budget with three to come, and hopefully in the 2023 budget, a new burn building that we opened last year, and just real excited about his leadership, and this is a very well-deserved award for Chief Brock, and I'll take a little bit of credit for hiring him. So he's a, he's a good guy, and he does a good job, and he's got a lot of loyal followers in the fire department. We're excited about that. Two others that received the Valor Award this past month, or this past year. Engine One Crew, consisting of Captain Benji Smith and Corporal Danny McGee, entered a structure while Sergeant John Wiggins was providing a water supply for the crew's safety. Engine One proceeded up the stairwell to the second floor, upon arriving, found a child unresponsive in upstairs hallway, removed that child through the front door and placed in care of EMS, and then Engine One re-entered the structure and again proceeded up stairwell and found a second child unresponsive. This child was in the hallway and was removed out to EMS, and both survived. They were commended on behalf of their battalion chiefs Greg Abbott and Greg Hunt, and said had it not been for their rapid development and dedication and training and expertise and experience of these firefighters, the incident would have not ended in the same way. So citizens of Rome and Floyd County should be as proud as we all are of all these firefighters, including Chief Brock, for their efforts, and we want to recognize them for their efforts on behalf of Floyd County Commission.
Jamie, one thing, Troy may have gotten the award, but I would put our fire department up against any place in Georgia or anywhere in the country. And so it's great that our leadership gets rewarded, but it's, our fire department is above and beyond, and so we appreciate y'all.
Absolutely. The command staff is extremely talented. They're a good group, and there's some retirements coming up later this year, but rest assured the group coming in behind them are well-prepared for the next steps.
Okay, Scotty Ethan, do the next one.
We have a very special guest in our presence who happens to be one of our employees, Marcus Roberts. He's a personal friend of mine and does a tremendous job for the sheriff's off, or for the county police and what he does, and we just want to recognize him for his accomplishments and his upcoming deployment. So we got a proclamation for him. Officer Marcus Roberts is best known for his infectious personality that promotes good morale at the Floyd County Police Department and within the Pepperell School District, where he works as a school resource officer. Officer Roberts is a twenty-year veteran of the Floyd County Police Department, where he has served the Pepperell District as a school resource officer for eighteen years. Staff and administration describe the officer as a glowing personality that uplifts everyone he encounters. Whereas he is a member of the SWAT team and is an unspoken leader in every capacity of his job, he also brings decades of military experience to his career, which includes seven different deployments since nineteen ninety-seven. Officer Robert departs on March the second for another deployment that will take him to Kuwait. Whereas in his recent evaluation by the department, school staff describe Officer Roberts as being an effective buffer between the disgruntled parents and the staff during difficult times. He is also a prime ingredient in the overall morale of the Pepperell Schools. Officer Roberts is famous for his drummer skills at the pep rallies, as well as his singing and dancing and antics that brighten the spirits of the students and the staff. Whereas Marcus has a great relationship with the student body, says Jason Coons, the principal at Pepperell High School. He is a great asset to the school, students, and students often come to him for advice and talk to him as just a friend. Whereas staff members say that Officer Roberts has a positive disposition and is effective in his role as SRO. He is very good in shutting down the officer aspect and talking to them person to person and providing them with advice. Whereas Officer Roberts is always smiling and walking the halls to interact with the students, he is visibly joyed by interacting with the younger students, said Brig Larry, the principal from the Pepperell Primary School. Whereas school staff and administrators were saddened by the news that he would be absent for a long period of time and worried about his safety during his deployment. Whereas Officer Roberts is a graduate of Model High School in nineteen ninety-three, he joined the Army in nineteen ninety-two and served on active duty for four years after high school graduation. Roberts later joined the Army Reserve as a mechanic and then the Army National Guard, where he's been for sixteen years as a military police officer. His rank is Sergeant First Class, and he joined the Floyd County Police Department in February of two thousand ones. Some of his previous deployments include Egypt in nineteen ninety-seven, Kuwait in nineteen ninety-eight, Kosovo in nineteen ninety-nine, which he was on a peacekeeping mission there, Iraq two thousand eight with Operation Iraq Freedom, Korea two thousand fourteen, Romania two thousand seventeen, and Morocco in two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore, on behalf of the Floyd County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the special recognition of Marcus Roberts and his contribution to our community on this day, Thursday, February the eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Don't say anything, Marcus? You sure?
Yeah, Marcus, can we get a picture with the commission real quick?
Obviously, we're very proud of you, Marcus, and we hope everything goes well and you're back here quickly. So thank you. Jamie, you want to continue with our employees?
Yes, sir. We only had a few respond that they would be here, and that's okay, but I'm actually going, if you'll all come up, if you're here when I call your name, and we'll get a single picture. I had four or five, I think, that confirmed and a few that we weren't sure about, but I'll go through these, starting with ten years of service, Sharon Poe, Sheriff's Office, Monica Combs, Sheriff's Office, James Osborne, Facilities, and Matthew Henry, Police. And then with fifteen years of service, David Wise, Public Works, Vicki Alexander, Sheriff's Office, Benjamin Phillips, Prison, Jeremy Penny, Police, David Williams, Police, and Dashiell Wiggins, Police. If you guys will just come up front here just for a second, we only got two more. With twenty years of service, so he'll be alone, I think I did see her, and then I'm pretty sure this one's here too, thirty years of service, Jerome Poole, Police Department. Let's give them all a hand for being here tonight and congratulate them.
We've got two proclamations tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Waters to do the Georgia Day proclamation, and then Commissioner Wallace to do the Arbor Day proclamation.
Is anyone here for Georgia Day? I'll just read it then. About that. Whereas Georgia Day is the holiday which the state of Georgia recognizes in honor of its colonial founding as the province of Georgia, and whereas the state of Georgia was founded by General James Edward Oglethorpe, who received a royal charter for establishing a colony in honor of King George the Second, and led a hundred and sixteen people from England on the HMS Anne, landing near what was to become Georgia's first city and later the capital, Savannah, on February twelfth, seventeen thirty-three. And whereas George Walton Button Gwinnett and Lyman Hall each signed the Declaration of Independence on behalf of Georgia, which later became the fourth state to ratify the U.S. Constitution on January second, seventeen eighty-eight. And whereas since its founding two hundred and eighty-seven years ago, Georgia has grown to over nine million people and has progressed from a rural state to a commercial, financial, and cultural center for the southeast and nation. And whereas all Georgians are invited to rediscover our natural, cultural, and historic wonders and sights, and to encourage people throughout our nation and the world to recognize the people, institutions, and historic events that have shaped Georgia's significant place in our country's history and global commerce. And whereas although not a public holiday, it was created by Georgia's General Assembly, which provided that February twelfth, the anniversary of the landing of the first colonist in Georgia under Oglethorpe, be observed in the public schools as Georgia Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rome City Commission and the Floyd County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Saturday, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, Georgia Day in Rome and Floyd County, and urge the citizens of Rome to join us in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations to celebrate our proud and rich heritage.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wallace.
Is anyone here for Arbor Day?
Hannah is.
Oh, Hannah, okay.
Come on up, Hannah.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day, we first observe with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be solutions to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil, by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic validity of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, on behalf of the Floyd County Board of Commissioners and the Rome City Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, February the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day in Floyd County and the city of Rome, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further encourage all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
We want to invite everybody for February seventeenth. I know our Georgia Arbor Day is the eighteenth, but we'll be celebrating it downtown behind the Sinovus Bank on West First Street on the seventeenth at one to two, and we planted fourteen trees surrounding Sinovus and around the city hall. So we're very excited about those trees, and we'll dedicate those to the city and read our proclamation for the city on that day. So we invite everybody to come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add to that, Rome is a tree city, and we're very proud of that. And probably on that date, on the seventeenth, someone who's speaking will say, there's an old Chinese proverb, "The best time to plant a tree is twenty years ago, the next best time is now." So I love that saying, and I appreciate Hannah, what you're doing to help us celebrate next week.
Thank you, and we'd like to say we did receive the fourteenth year Tree Growth Award, and we're now known as thirty-two years as a tree city USA.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have two items for first readings tonight. I'm going to ask Art, who is our planning director, to read each one of those. The public hearings on those will be at our next meeting on February the twenty-second, where we will have an open public hearing. Art, if you would proceed.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The first item we have is file number Z twenty-two oh-two oh-two, which is requesting rezoning from heavy industrial to split zones of suburban residential and multifamily residential located at Zero Calhoun Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcel, L eleven Z zero zero three. Staff recommends approval on the condition that the parcels are formally subdivided before the development begins. The planning commission recommends denial by a vote of four to three. The second item we have is file number Z twenty-two zero-two zero-three, requesting rezoning from suburban residential to community commercial located at Zero Rockmark Highway, Floyd County Tax Parcel, K one seven zero eighty-five, K one seven zero eighty-six, K one seven zero eighty-seven. Staff recommends denial, and the planning commission recommends approval by a vote of five to two. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the staff prospectively requests that these two items be placed on first, excuse me, second reading two weeks from this evening.
Thank you very much, Art. Those have been placed on first reading, and we'll have the public hearing at the twenty-second meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. At the second reading for a public hearing tonight will be to adopt a resolution of Floyd County, Georgia, to approve the adoption of a timber harvesting ordinance that the state has passed to bring our ordinances into compliance with that. We will now open the public hearing. If there is anyone here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll ask the commission for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve. Is any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. No public hearings tonight. There's one resolution. This is to adopt a resolution declaring certain property of the county unserviceable and authorizing the transfer of said property to the Rome Floyd County Landback Authority. Those parcels include King B Circle, 303 Ross Street, 106 Brookwood Avenue, and 420 Roundham Avenue. Is there a motion on this?
Make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have nothing from the chair to report tonight. I'll ask if any commissioners have anything on any of their committees or appointments that they'd like to bring forward. If not, Mr. Manager, is anything from your chair?
Just briefly, following up on the Emerald Oaks subdivision, went out and had a site visit about a week ago. We've got a plan of attack with the developer as well as the county. County's got some responsibility in this as well and we are keeping in weekly communication with the assigned leader in the neighborhood, Mr. Buckingham. So just to follow up on that, there'll be some additional work done next week and hopefully we'll move forward with a plan of attack on trying to improve that entryway into Emerald Oaks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harmon, anything from your chair?
I don't have any report, Mr. Chairman. I would like to welcome a special guest. Mrs. Anna Peake is here tonight. She is taking LSAT and is thinking about law school and I'm hoping that attending the commission meeting this evening will not dissuade her from that pursuit. This is Dr. Senate and Barb's granddaughter, Miss Al Peake's granddaughter, and welcome her tonight.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Glad you're here.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Elrod, is the consent agenda in order?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Scotty Hancock to approve. Was any further discussion on that? Ms. Elrod, would you call the roll and reverse order this time so Mr. Hancock can make sure?
You asked him.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Hancock gave me a hard time about something in caucus today and so I got my chance to get him back.
We need his full name.
No, please don't.
Okay, into new business, we have five items in new business. I'll ask Mr. McCord to lead us through that.
Yes, sir. Item one, consider Crawford, Millie, Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. Task order three for professional services for runway 119 rehab overlay design and bidding processes for Richard B. Russell Regional Airport. Floyd County in the amount of $44,060. This includes performance of the design and bidding phase services associated with the runway rehab and overlay. We really hope to include this as well as our expansion hopefully will get done at the same time, not guaranteeing that, but hope so. The overlay was estimated at $1.1 million. We'll have to obviously go to bid, but this will be those bidding services and professional services tied to that.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Waters to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I did not mention that that is a 95-5 project, not with 90% by federal, 5% state, and then 5% local. Item two, consider adoption of a professional services contract with IcoTech for the maintenance and operation of the video control system at Floyd County Sheriff's Office. We had a presentation in caucus, total expense is $88,605 per year for six years.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item two?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, consider Granicus Peak Agenda Management and Granicus Gov Meetings Live Cast for Floyd County Board of Commissioners Meetings in the amount of $17,575 in 2022, $15,515 in 2023, and $16,605 in 2024. This was budgeted for year 2022 at $15,155 and require an increase to the budget of $2,420. This is also recommended pending final legal review.
Thank you. A motion on item three?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Waters?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wallace to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four, consider recommendation from purchasing to approve the purchase of a 2022 Explorer Base XLT 4x4 for Floyd County Prison from Prater Ford LLC in the amount of $31,655. This was budgeted in 2017, splopped at $39,000 and to be purchased in 2022. It's also the low bid.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on item four?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maxi, second by Commissioner Wallace to approve. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And item five, consider maintenance agreement with Williams Communications in amount of $470,905 for radio site and user terminal maintenance. This will also include additional services for all Harris Radio users on the Floyd County system, including radio tuning and many of the portables as well as some new batteries. And this is, was discussed back in December with the vendor and is a recommendation to approve.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item five?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Waters, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Is this a yearly payment?
Yes, sir. It's one year. The $4.70 is for one year.
Any other questions? Sorry, Larry, didn't see you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Maxi?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Waters?
Yes.
Chair Bagby?
Yes.
Motion carries.
During our caucus tonight, we did go into executive session to discuss a property matter and no action was taken. Is there any other business come for the group?
I noticed Kathy, were y'all, I mean, we're glad to have y'all, but were y'all here for a purpose and we missed it or?
We're glad you're here, though.
Yes, no, we're glad you're here. Just wanted to recognize y'all. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll take a great deal of abuse about that, so we'll leave it alone. Anything else to come for our group? If not, we stand adjourned.